Evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 12, 2022 playing board meeting. Everyone, please rise for our pledge.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, before you do the minutes, I guess congratulations is in order to you and would in current congratulations on your award.
Thank you. I apologize for not being able to be there in person.
I think this is legitimate excuse. If you would take the roll call, please.
Absolutely. Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Garbino.
Here.
Dennis McNamara.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Christopher Zabarto.
Here, but non voting tonight.
Thank you. First on our agenda, the draft minutes from September 14, 2022. Any changes additions anybody can think of? Not then I make them. And once again, great job as always. Make a motion. We approve the minutes from September 14, 2022. All in favor? Thank you. And first is a extension request from Granite Point. It's for their 21st 90 day time extension. For steep slopes, tree preservation, stormwater management, and erosion sediment control permits. It's a re grant of Route 1 and the address is 118 202. On the map, it's 27.05 dash 1 dash 2 and 5. This, like I said, this is their 21st 90 day extension and the dates are from October 20, 2022 up to and including January 23, 2023, as per town law, section 276 7C and town code, section 150-13M. Any board member comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. As I was talking to Chris, we have this is now entering its sixth year. This, this can go on. My understanding that this can go on forever. Aren't there changes in certain policies over the last six years that might affect this development?
It could be.
Well, in answer to, in answer to first part of your question theoretically, Jerry, correct me, it can go on as long as they keep requesting an extension. But the last time Mr. Allen was in here, he did indicate to us that some work has been done by the state, if I'm not mistaken. Does that sound right, Dave?
Yes, that was my recollection as well. Yeah, with DEC.
The DEC, I should say, yes. So there is work being done. The states portion, I believe, is all cleaned up.
Okay.
But the law is that they can continue to request. Yep, so. Well, then, if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion that we grant that request.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Next is our public hearing for the Dish Wireless. And that's on 294 Route 100. It's the application for a special use permit wireless telecommunications facility. On the map is 28.1-1-1.1. And it's actually for a new use permit to co locate the dish wireless antennas radios and cabling on an existing monopole tower and an equipment cabinet on a steel platform with new underground fiber to Route 138. Evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Sheridan, attorney with Snyder and Snyder here on behalf of Dish. As the chairman just indicated, Dish is looking to co locate on the existing tower. And at the existing facility at 294 Route 100, they will be locating their antennas on the tower. There will be the lowest carrier on that tower at approximately 61 feet. They will be putting equipment within the existing fence compound at the base of the tower. And they will have its connections going out to the road. We were, we understand that there's a public hearing tonight. We'd love this board to open the public hearing. If there are no comments, close the public hearing. I also understand that a draft of resolution has been drafted. And if there are no public comments that the board is satisfied, we request that you adopt that resolution.
Okay, before we open the public hearings, I want to hear any comments from Dave or Steve. Dave?
I have no further comments.
Steve?
Our only comments are that we do have a couple of comments outstanding from our September 8, 2022 memo. And we recommend that the board elect to waive responses to items to D, E, and F, which deal with the applicant's design philosophy roaming agreements and our drive tests for the purposes of this resolution if the board so decides. The other major item outstanding on our review is an erosion and sediment control plan. We have been in touch with the applicant and we know that they are working on this. We've seen some of the information for it. And I don't believe that their completion of that application per the town code will change any of the environmental impacts or scope of the work as proposed. And that can be a condition of the resolution if the board so chooses.
Okay. Any board member comments?
I agree with that.
Well, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here would like to speak on it? Appears there isn't anyone. Make a motion. We close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you. Is the board feel comfortable with preparing staff to prepare the resolution that they already prepared? That's pretty quick, huh?
It is.
Any comments on that? No? So do we actually have to physically have it or we can?
Well, we provided a
Yeah, that copy. So we can.
You have a copy before you, so you may act on the resolution that's before you.
Okay. Any other board member comments? Can you help me with with the numbering sequence? Because I I apologize. I did not bring her with me to make the motion for that.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, then I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2022-8. The grant of conditional special permit approval to Dish Wireless LLC for modification and upgrade of existing approved Crown Castle facility. And for the record, that is at 294 Route 137, Route 138. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And once again, prepare another resolution that Vicky didn't find anything to say about, which I'm impressed. You might be setting a record here.
Yeah. The fabric is at the I don't know. Somebody said it's the knot in the tapestry, I guess, that makes it more expensive.
Okay.
I'm glad you caught it.
Next is a project review for the first at Biddle properties. It's the application for site plan and wetlands permit approval for a proposed tractor supply at the Somers Common Shopping Center, Route 6 and Tomahawk Street.
A little bit. Just turn it a little bit.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe that there are representatives from first that Biddle and perhaps Tractor Supply that are oh, in virtual or at Zoom at some point, so they may.
Did you hear that, Paul?
Yeah, I have two people there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, you got, you got Wing sitting idle, Mr. Biddle and Matt Darling, who, if I recall, is from Tractor Supply, so.
Correct.
Just a clarification. I represent Tractor Supply, but I'm not from Tractor Supply, but I'll be here to answer any questions about their operations and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob Aiello with the firm of JMC in Armagh, New York, and we are the engineers for the applicant or step into properties. Here with me tonight is Andrew Albrecht, Vice President of Construction with Earth Federal Properties, as well as Wing Biddle and Matt Darling, as you just heard with us virtually. Just wanted to give you an update as to what we've done since our last appearance before your board in August. We have appeared before the ZBA and obtained the variance for the fence that's proposed around the outdoor display area for the proposed tractor supply use. Just as a reminder to everyone that might be listening at home and is not familiar with the application. The board on my right is, it shows the former Home Goods store. And in the area of that Home Goods store minus 2,700 square feet and the outside area that's currently a open courtyard. That will be the proposed tractor supply store. The inside use would be in the Home Goods space, and then we're doing an outdoor display area in the location of the existing pervious area outside the space. So we did receive our variance for the eight foot tall fence around the perimeter of the outdoor display area. So with that has occurred, so we have that and we're back before your board. Leading up to this meeting, we did provide comment response letters based on comments that we received from the town planning consultant, the town's engineering consultant, as well as from Westchester County Department of Planning. And we were also in receipt of new versions of their comments and you know, we're prepared to go through any of those comments that you might want to focus on. We plan to provide additional information to you. You know, when our next submission and in response to those comments, but we're hoping from a procedural standpoint, if we're able to answer any of your questions tonight, that we can ask your board to perhaps consider scheduling a public hearing for the project at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, there is one other item I forgot in my notes, too. We have also submitted our stormwater pollution prevention plan to the town engineer or your town engineer consultant and also to the New York City Department of Environmental Protection.
But words, words, we were talking about that before the meeting. That's a joke. It's a disgrace. You have to do that. I'm sorry. It's, it's not right. I, I know.
Well, we are in a designated main street area.
I know. I know. I know. It's just.
So it's been designated.
Two million trees that'd be cut down for that.
Well, it's a lot better than it used to be.
I know.
He said, provide 20 copies of the book and
Yeah.
Now we provide digital copies, so. Progressing that's.
Is that, Dave, do you have anything to say?
Just, I did prepare a review memo and I just wanted to comment that the applicant did provide what I think is sufficient information to have a better understanding of the parking demand, the traffic demand. They did get the variances, Mr. ALO has indicated. I think part of the the comments that I didn't see, one is that the town engineer, engineering technician just wanted to check on the functioning of the stormwater system, but that shouldn't hold up the scheduling of a public hearing. We can do that. And I've already mentioned that to Mr. Wolfle. So we're going to go out there in the next short while. The one comment that that I had is just if you could explain, or perhaps somebody from, maybe it's Mr. Darling, just the part of your operation is the use of the the outdoor storage where you have people coming in to pick up some of the larger items. And my mainly concern was how, you know, from an operational standpoint, how is that coordinated? Is there, does somebody call in in advance just so that you're avoiding queuing to get into that? And perhaps it's, you don't have the volume. And I'm thinking that you have a survey of a number of different facilities in the Northeast, and perhaps that could provide a little bit of background as to how that operation works.
Sure. Matt, would you like to discuss that in a little more detail, or would you like me to?
I'm happy to kick it off. And then if you have anything to add, that'll be just fine. But I've personally been in charge of developing over 50 of these stores and locations. And I apologize. I got a request to share my video. I'm actually traveling here and I have very poor reception. I'm worried if I start my video, I'll drop you all. But if it's mandatory, I'll turn it on.
No, I don't think he needs to turn his video on.
Okay.
You're not presenting anything, are you, Matt?
No, no, no. I just got something came on my screen asking me to start my video, so I just wanted to clarify that. Anyway, so I have, like I said, personally been in charge of developing more than 50 of these locations across the northeast and these side yards are I think they're accessed a half a dozen times in any given day. I've honestly, in all of my time visiting my stores that I've developed and that I've developed for others, I have honestly never seen a vehicle go in there. They do go in there, but extremely infrequently. So in order for a vehicle to go in there, they need to purchase something that they can't physically pick up and bring out. Believe it or not, there's a lot of merchandise in there that can be picked up and brought out. And there's only two cash registers within the building. And so customers have to go out there, shop around, come back in, inform the clerk working at the counter, what merchandise they want to purchase. The clerk has a, has a magazine full of items, so they'll ring the item out the customer wants. And then the customer will exit and bring their vehicle in the store. Where an associate will be there waiting for them, be it with a forklift or with just additional manpower to lift the item up into the vehicle. So, you know, there's only two registers. Usually only one is occupied unless it's a busy time of the year. There just can't be enough transactions that happen fast enough for vehicles to be needing to enter into the space and cause any backlog. As far as hard data is concerned, I don't necessarily have hard data, you know, spreadsheets, you know, traffic counts that go into this thing, but just having experience with this over, over the past decade of working with Tractor Supply and developing their stores and and owning several of them. I can tell you right now that there's just, there just is no traffic really that goes through that can create any type of queuing situation. I think also we can't forget that this we'll call it dry aisle through the fence yard is a good 150 some odd feet long. If so, if there were more than one vehicle, you needed access to it. There's plenty of room for cars to or vehicles to enter and just sit until they're loaded up and then exit out, out the rear. So again, I mean, I hope that answers it. You know, it's my experience and happy to, you know, clarify that even further if I need to.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
And somebody, can somebody go over the, the change in parking spaces that we're approving for the home goods versus the tractor supply?
Sure. So our, our table of land use on the cover sheet shows the number of parking spaces that currently exist on the property. And the number of parking spaces after the implementation of the Tractor Supply Company store. So there's currently 1,064 parking spaces on the property. And once the Tractor Supply Company is in operation, there will be 1,037. Now that is primarily along the back of the building where there will be outdoor storage and display of trailers and things of that nature. So we're not removing the parking spaces, but they will be utilized for outdoor display. There's also a propane tank that's proposed behind the building in the location of those existing parking spaces, which is going to be used, you know, as a filling station for customers. You know, home propane tanks. So that's the macro look at the parking. Regarding the parking demand of the Tractor Supply Store versus the Home Goods, Tractor Supply Company's engineer on that report solely engineering, prepared a report dated August 29 that we provided to your board for review. Mr. Smith had quoted from that stating that the typical supply for a track supply based on the new, the number, the different stores that they analyzed in their letter is usually at a ratio of 2.2 per thousand square feet. Where only 1.06 of that is actually utilized, but the supply that's provided is 2.2. So what that means for this store is that that would equate to 114 parking spaces being provided at a typical Tractor Supply Company, but only about half of that would be actually utilized based on their analysis. Whereas the existing Home Goods store and the square footage of the area to be used is outdoor display under the town code would require 150 parking spaces. So the typical tractor supply use or supply is less than what is currently required by the code for the space that will be utilizing as a tractor supply company. So there's, you know, a, a number of analyses and other counts at other stores that provided, but what I just explained is really the crux of the, of the letter.
So that's your question, Bruce?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted that repeated. I read the, I read the report seemed to make make sense. I just wanted to clarify it.
Understood.
Steve, do you want to run through your comments?
Yeah, we're waiting for Steve.
Oh, actually. I'm sorry. So
Hey, Rob.
One item to, so we have read through what an incurrence comments and one item I did want to explain in a little more detail is that the, the area that is currently the courtyard area, if you will, the, the grass area. There's a ongoing pump and treat operation there that's under the supervision of the DEC.
I was waiting for that.
Yes. So that's prior groundwater contamination that relates to the uses which existed before the shopping center was built in its current form. Exactly. And I believe it. Correct.
Cleaning fluid.
I'll let, I'll let you finish.
Major, major.
Yes. It was, it was. So that, that's been an ongoing pump and treat operation where water groundwater is extracted from that area. It's treated in a in a structure just outside the paved area and then is discharged to the water course and wetland in the back of the property. So within the area that we're using as an outdoor display area and putting in the concrete pad, there are four monitoring wells. And that's where samples are taken periodically by first that Bill and provided the DEC where they review under the current site management plan. And there are two extraction wells where they're which have pumps inside of them, which are drawing water out and pumping it to the structure that I meant with the treatment. So those wells can and will remain. So the ongoing pump and treat operation will remain. We are planning to leave the extraction wells in their current location. And the monitoring wells, three of them, I believe will stay and one might need to be modified. We need to work that through that with the DEC, but first that Biddle has its consultant, GES, who is currently, who has been in contact with DEC explaining to them these plans and the intention of what we're looking to do here. We've had conference calls with them. And they will have to modify the site management plan to accommodate this year. So there are some details we need to work through. Should the walls stick out through the slab so that they'll always be accessible? Can they be flush with the concrete so that, you know, they won't be disturbed, but people might put something to be stored over them and it might, you know, preclude, you know, how you can store it. So we're going to work through those details with the DEC, but the monitoring wells, three out of the four likely, one might be relocated. Though their function will remain and the extraction wells will remain. And also the electric, the electric line and the horse mane that goes from the extraction wells to the treatment facility will also either remain or be reconstructed, but that's being coordinated with GES and the DEC.
Thank you. Steve, you might want to make some comments?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Rob, for that additional information. In the execution of the work in the context of the site management plan, is there adequate space in your limits of disturbance for any supplemental materials handling or segregation of, of soil from that area as opposed to other areas of the site? Just to make sure that the environmental impacts of the work that you're proposing there are appropriately disclosed and the limit of disturbance is correctly identified on the plans.
Right. Yeah, that is actually Steve, a very good point, but that is another aspect that we are currently dealing with the DC on that GES is coordinating with them on. We're actually working with them to do some additional testing of the soils to categorize the soil, which will then inform where the, you know, where the material will be handled as we're doing the construction of the tractor supply. Steve, to answer your question directly, I don't have an answer for that right now in terms of what the, you know, what that will yield. But right now, the plan is to do the soil management and the sorting within that area, within the area of the outdoor display. Get it to the point where we can get the materials where they need to be ultimately, and then we can construct the you know, construct the actual finished improvement, the pack. So more information to come, but the intention is to keep it within that existing disturbance area, within that existing area for the sorting of the soil.
And would any, if you do need additional space in that limit of disturbance, would that be within the existing parking lot area? Or are you anticipating that you would need, if you need additional space, any other currently impervious surface for that soil staging and transfer area?
Yeah, I will need to get some more information from G, from GES and provide that in a, in a follow up, Steve. I'm not 100% sure what the plan is.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. And, and we do acknowledge that the, you did submit the SWIP to us. I did take a quick look. It looks certainly complete and I appreciate you and your team's efforts putting that through. We'll review it in more detail, but at this time I don't, I don't see anything in that plan that would result in any changes to the site plan from what's currently proposed. Rob, can you speak a bit to the county's comments? And the relocation of the Beeline bus stop and, and their comments and how this plan has accommodated their feedback?
Yeah, we haven't reached out to the county with regard to the bus stop, but you know, currently there's a bus stop in front of that area that where the outdoor display area will be. You know, it's certainly something that we want to make sure remains at the site and we'll work with the county to identify the, the best location, you know, with the current, with the proposed site plan.
Okay.
Anything else, Steve?
I have no further comments, Chairman. Thank you.
Board member comments? Anyone? How does the board, Steve, would you recommend that we schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, I think the applicant has disclosed the impacts of the project adequately at this time for the public to comment. So yes, I'd be in favor of that.
I would concur.
Board feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion and it would schedule a public hearing for our November 9, 2022 meeting.
Second.
All in favor? You got what you wanted.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Was that November 9?
November 9.
November 9.
T-shirts to follow?
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you on November 9.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Next on our agenda is an informal presentation on a plan for subdivision of two parcels into three residential lots except accessed off a Green Tree Road through the town right away and New York State DOT Eastman areas. The property is in the R8 zoning district, and I believe if I read this correct, owned by Michael Burrell. So I'm saying it right. Burrell and Nicole Stern. You know, like I reason. I don't blame you. You know, like I reason, I don't blame you. He's been away for a while. 2013, Nancy, something like that, 13, 14?
2006, maybe?
My name is Peter Scott. I'm an engineer and architect and I'm representing the applicant tonight on this project. What we're proposing is indicated before you on SY1. And the property is a 280A project. That is, it doesn't have frontage on a town road. It doesn't have frontage because the bike trail passes between this property and the green tree road. And accordingly, we have contacted DOT. And they've given us confirmation that we'll be able to pass through this property with a roadway serving three lots. We presented some paperwork indicating that they, they would permit us apply for an application, but because of CICA, we, we won't be following through with that until we work with your offices to proceed with that. The property has some history. And it wasn't our history, but we'll go through it anyway. If you don't mind, I just speak from here.
Can you hear?
He needs the mic.
I'm going to be recording star. The, the property then is defined before you and what we have is we propose three lots. The lots again are serviced by a common driveway. We then split the lots into three as shown where a common driveway provides access to the various house sites. The driveways are designed in such a manner that they meet fire safety requirements for providing K turns per state fire department mandates. And so you, you enter into this driveway area here. A K turns available, or you can go right to the house site, go to the next unit. Again, a big K turn is available and the last site is here. Septic areas are depicted on the plan up in upper corners and in the lower area, we have some septic test data which adequate, that indicates that the soils are adequate for septic systems. We haven't tested yet. With Western County, we're going to wait for the results of this review, perimeter discussions put it that way. We had the wetlands analyzed by Environmental Services, Inc., Mike Nowicki, a well-renowned soil scientist slash wetland consultant. And he identified and provided wetland flags on the property as shown, and they were located by our surveyor. And so we've taken care of that component of the project itself. We also looked at steep slopes and I could show you some nice color pictures. And we can talk about those. What's this one? This is a subdivision constraint map. This just talks about soils and, and wetland lines. And as I depicted to you before, we have a wetlands defined in blue, a little wetland over here. This is red where it combines slopes and, and wetlands. The yellow buffer area is depicted on the map itself with another yellow down here, I suppose. That's another buffer. And so also we have slopes between 15 and 25%, the light brown. Just for completeness sake, we did locate slopes between 25 and 35%. But most of these slope areas are too small to be counted per your steep slope ordinance. They're not, they're, they're isolated and they're underneath the 10,000 square foot regulation. But we showed him anyway to say that we realize that they're there, but they don't qualify per year regulations. And I have two of these here. The steep slopes are too small to be considered and they're eliminated. They all become the, the slope below that. And then there's a, a steep slope area to the far west of this project. And again, this counts and it has a lesser slope around it as well. As you can see, we, we have located the houses in such a manner to be outside of these areas of steep slope. And therefore the road moves in this manner on the property itself. Stormwater management, we looked into it already. We've got some basins shown here to common areas. There is a wetland, a sedimentation basin proposed here in the buffer because of the fact that we don't have any area to work with. We have to collect all our stormwater here for treatment prior to discharge to the wetland area. We have some more basins over here for these individual lots. But the cumulative impacts of the driveway are pretty much absorbed by these two basins in this area prior to discharge to the water course. The water courses will all be discharged in a manner parallel to the our bike path. And we're going to run piping down along here discharge where that red line is. So we don't have to cross the, the bike path with any piping. We're, we're diverting it to where we have a, a water course in that area. And then just for completeness, to go up over the other component we have for this, we have a soil map. If I can turn this over. And basically the soil maps indicate that we have class B soils, which are the, the darker brown. The lighter brown is class C soils. Class D soils are the wetland, of course, which are within the, the well in as we've defined. And at this juncture, as you'll notice, the flagging area and the wetland and the soil lines don't quite match. It happens sometimes because we're using NRCS soil data and they're, they use photogrammetry while we have an actual in place analysis of the wetland line. But anyway, we're, we've located pretty much most of our development as in class B soils, which are good for drainage and for construction. And we have, we provided you a particular list of the soils, basically a Charlton soil. The sea soils are Ridgeberry Complex in Lightchester and the, the D soils are cold and muck. So that's that. We did a couple of other things just for interest sake. So as I talked about the lots, we've talked about very quickly, the property again, to define that as this big huge angle here to the, on the far side of the property. There's a small portion of land over across the, the right of way, which we, we, we aren't, we're not planning to do any development with, and we're, we'll try and work out what to do with this small parcel, which was segmented from the major parcel by the penetration of the bike trail. There's a little bit of extra piece of property over here. We have no use for, but it's part of, part of this ownership of this package. Just for clarity, then I, I also turned on the soils in a black and white form for our overall plan, which depicts both the subdivision and all our compliance to all your respective bulk zoning regulations and environmental sensitive land criteria. And we, we meet all these criteria with what we propose. In fact, our lots are larger than are required. And that means we, we have more usable, far more usable land that's required for these compliant lots in the respective zone. And we have a table on all that we've prepared. It's hard to see it from this far away, but it's all part of the package. So so Brian was kind of interested of what, what happened with this property and where to go. And so I have, I brought a litany of old plans that we may be able to talk back, reminisce about the old days on this particular property and, and, and show you what we've done to improve what we have versus what was proposed in the past. I think this is one of the most pertinent ones. This was in 2005 was the last date I found. And this, this is basically what was proposed before. And what was proposed before was a, was a road swinging around through a big area like this. Again, they had three lots, but they were compromised in a couple manners. One thing is when, when they did the steep slope analysis, they didn't take into account the reduction of certain slopes because of limited size. They didn't take, they didn't look at the zoning that carefully. And they didn't realize that we, we, we can eliminate these sections because they're less than 10,000 square feet. So they, they consider this all steep slopes, which it is not. The, also we had a surveyor check all the topography as well for this application. The other thing they had is it was a wetland in this location, but we had our soil scientists and wetland people inspect this area and they did not find a wetland there. It's an upland area, but it does not constitute a wetland. But we're going to have to have a, or schedule a, a wetland review by your consultants at some time to verify the findings of our, of our experts. But I've been working with Mr. Nowicki for 30 years. And, and all of his work is always accepted by appropriate agencies, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to that point at some time with this project. Because we didn't have the wetlands here, we kind of had a much better approach to our lots. They weren't as constrained. They weren't driving through these large movements that you see on the plan. Our, our project has a lot less area of of disturbance. Because we're using common elements as shown on the project. In 2013, we had some comment letters given to us about what was taking. There were some comment letters offered to us from the last applicant on this particular project. And it's something we just want to talk about really briefly if we could. In the past, the, someone ran the DEC mapper and they had findings which, which we don't follow with. And we, we will offer to the updated resource environmental mapper from New York City DEC. And the findings of this map basically indicate see all the little bubbles are appearing all over the place. These are areas of, of protected animals in the area and they consist of bats. There's a big bat area depicted over here as to the east of our property, more bats over here. There is, or there was some question on the last applicant about bog turtles. Again, our research has indicated that, in, in fact, through the DEC mapper that we don't have bog turtles on our property and they're not identified by DEC. But I'm sure we'll have to address that sometime later on, just to solve that problem. There is endangered species of cotton tails rabbits, but they're over here on this DEC mapper. And then again, we, we had people look at the site and we didn't really see any evidence. It's not really a good property for rabbits areas, but we'll have some look at that as well for the, as we pursue the project. The, the last item is we have a, we have a long form EEF ready to go. We, we have all the components to move forward. But we wanted to offer this to you first to sort of talk about where we're going with the project and maybe get some input from you at this point in time. Just for interest sake, there was even another application before that on this property, which I show here. That's even earlier. And again, it follows a lot of similar traits that we have here. But again, the steep slopes were handled differently than they are on this particular map because of the revised ordinances you put in place since the date of these old subdivisions. So with that, could I answer any questions?
Let's hear from, from Dave and Steve first.
Comment on some of what he just said. You commented on the wildlife. I'm kind of familiar with the bike trail.
Yes.
How far would you say you are from the end of the bike trail? Roughly. In feet.
I can get that data for you. I've read it many times, but I'll be candid with you. I had to go into a map to refer that.
Anyhow, I just want to point out there are a ton of turtles. Snapping turtles and box turtle.
Yes.
In great abundant amounts on the other side of
Right here.
In the prior application, we were talking about a spill. I'm just familiar with the area of the spill and the bike path. And I'm so happy to be able to report about how happy the animal life is in the area of the spill. And there are a lot of turtles. It's just unbelievable.
Yes.
So yeah, we are referring to a specific one, but we have the open space committee, which keeps track of our turtle population.
Yes.
And they will be reading these and probably I'm sure they'll comment on how they feel about your assessment.
Sure. We would be more than happy to have our experts meet with yours and field and walk through that. One thing is that we're following grade with all of our roadways. It's not, it's not a big fill operations, a driveway. But we have many ways of mitigating, you know, we can put tunnels underneath it for turtle passages and all the rest. We do this in other projects in, in the area. In regards to mitigating for the bats, typically we just don't cut any trees outside the envelope between October 1st and March 1st. And we don't do anything to the site in those, be outside those areas. So the bats can go in the trees and such. We do our work in the winter time if we can. It's what, what happens in a subdivision like this is we would normally show you a phase plan, which we have available for you. It's phased. So we go to the, we go to this point and get all the common components operational. And then as we proceed forward, we design everything on an individual lot basis. So we cover the roads with a common component HOA managed. And then later on, as each person builds their project, we make them stand alone in regards how to treat their stormwater. So you, you don't think of this project as wiping everything out. We're strategically working on it. And we'll show you limits of disturbance. We have an LLD line on our plans. It's shown on, that defines where we're disturbing it. And we would be disturbing small components as we move forward. So it's going to be a four-phase project, common lot one, two, three, accordingly in that manner.
Chairman, I, I think it's important at this point to discuss kind of the process because it, Mr. Peter had mentioned 280A as a process, open development. And I've asked Mr. Riley to kind of fill the board in as to procedurally, because the, as part of this process, the application would need to go to the town board for their approval of, of that process. And then there would just be a coordination of processing the application after that.
Yeah. 280A subdivision four came, came about because this is a perfect example. There's no access via, you know, a town road or anything on a filed map. So the only way that can be developed is the town law 280A4. Like in a village, there, there's no, no such open development, but there is in the town. And what it requires is the coordination of the town board and the planning board. Either, you know, this board will take the, the, the lead and should be, and I spoke to Roland about this too, would be the lead agency. And you, your requirement is that you must make a recommendation to the town board, either for or against the proposal. And the town board can then decide whether to accept it or to deny it. But your, your function is the regular planning function and to write this report to the town board. And there's no time restraints on this. You know, you don't have like 90 days, six months or something to do this. So yeah, that's, that's basically what it is. It's, it's a, it's a way of keeping, the possibility is to keep an area rural terror, ca- 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 characteristics in a, in, in an area in the, in the suburbs. So it's that, that, that would be the process. And it's, like I said, I discussed it with Roland. I, I read up because I haven't done one of these in a while. And that's how it would go. The board would go through this whole process and decide whether it's favorable for the town board to make an open development area here. And I think, I think you've gone through this process. You, I don't, you know, in looking at what Seret had, I didn't see anything about 280A. I don't know what, how they were doing it, but I'm sure she knew that that's what it was when, when, when this, and I talked to you beforehand that it, this was a project that seemed to be going along without much objection and all of a sudden it stopped. Much objection and all of a sudden it stopped.
A quick question if I may is who's the lead agent for seeker?
Who's going to be the lead agent? Roland suggested, and, and I agree that it'll be the planning board.
Very good.
That, but that, you know, the, the town board could always say they want to be in that, but I'm, I'm taking the information from him. They don't.
I have a question about.
Comments, but let me just, let's just hear from Steve and then we'll get bored.
Okay.
Comments.
Sure, excuse me. I think. The development on the lot itself aside, I think our, our two main questions for the applicant would be. Around the work in the wetland buffer for the access road. And then secondarily for. The access across the trailway. I understand that there is. An easement, I think it's sixteen and a half foot wide or something like that across the, the bike path. From DOT, but you know, whether there's been any coordination or discussion with. DOT or, or. I don't, I'm not sure if it's county parks that has an administrative role of the, the trailway there. Around pedestrian and bicycle safety for the crossing of, of this driveway. Can you elaborate on, on both of those points? Kind of what the thought is around mitigation for?
Yeah, we've gone over DOT, what they want and basically is they want a, I call it a rumble zone. That is basically you're going to have. A precast. Concrete elements on each side of the paved. Bike path, which would basically slow the vehicular traffic down, but also give a. Or make a noise when you approach it. So they, they want, they want people to hear people driving on aprons on each side of the pavement. With a. A precast, a unilock or equivalent. The DOT has a spec for it that we'd be proposing for it. And that's, that's how you'd approach the crossing. Crossing's paved, we're not touching the pavement. You just basically, we have to put signage up. Like, like other places on the bike way, which define that there's a crossing taking place. And that's pretty much it.
So I, I just. So in order to connect. The proposed subdivided properties and subsequent houses that would be developed on there. We need to lay a road across the rail trail. So that they can access Green Tree Road, correct, to exit into the.
Well, if I may, the bike path is asphalt and stays as such. We abut that with a precast. Elements of, for, for a paving of precast stones. And that we butt those to the pavement itself. So literally, we're actually, all we're doing is our, our vehicles will be crossing on the asphalt that exists there. And outside of that area within the right of way, it'd be a cobbles, similar to cobbles.
Right. And then, and then how do we stop the bicycles and walkers and strollers? From walking the path while the, the residents are trying to traverse the bike path.
Yeah, there's stop signs. We have to put stops on each side of the, of the crossing. I can give you many pictures of a standard detail they utilize on the bike path. There's probably. Thirty or forty crossings across a bike path that are existing right now. We're going to file their details. They gave them to me already. We'll just provide them to you.
Yeah, there, there are standards for this type of situation that DOT has. And including stop signs, the, the rumble strips that you had mentioned and several others.
Yep.
And are, are we responsible to ensure that this project is compliant with those standards from the state DOT? Or is they a separate entity when it comes to?
I, I have to apply for a permit. They indicated we could go forward with that, but we are waiting for a secret determination. Once we get to seek a determination, we're going to get a permit from DOT to do this. That permit will be based upon the filing of their appropriate details and approved by DOT. As a, as a third or fourth approval agency on this project. We used to go to town board, planning board, a D P, D C. Board of Health and, and DOT. I think I left anyone out. Maybe Army Corps will throw it in there as well.
Is it possible to have some kind of a mechanical signal device so that as a vehicle approaches the crossway? It would flash a light?
It's not necessary, but I mean, we can always pursue that with them. Typically. They don't like those type of materials because they don't want to, they don't want, they want, they don't want to maintain it. And I think whatever, whenever you see anything in the right of way, it's, it's passive. That is, it's a sign. It's a rumble strip. It's something that they don't have to, to worry about because I, I think liabilities enter into it.
Yeah.
If it's not flashing appropriately.
If you put it in and it malfunctions, then there's a liability issue.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So you don't, you don't do it.
Yes.
I mean, if, if, if someone smacks into a bicyclist crossing the, the rail trail. I think there's some liability there too, right? So we, we have to do a risk analysis when it comes to that. Overall, I think.
Well, I think the, the. The kind of Somers would not be liable for that situation. Because it's not the lands of the town of Somers. It's actually the state of New York lands of, if an impact takes place within that corridor. And that's kind of how, how it seems to work with other proposals we've done in the past of crossing the bike trail.
And this isn't the first one. No.
Excuse me. The roadway that you're describing, that's an extension from the green, green road, green street. Across is a, is a common driveway and it'll be built to driveway specs. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, it's a common driveway we maintain by an HOA or, or a, or a. A maintenance agreement between the owners. There's two ways to do these type of projects. You'd have the right, of course, to review the specs of the common component. And we're going to have some specialty specifications where we cross through the, the buffer from the wetland, but beyond that. It'll be. It'll be a very high-end driveway, let's put it that way.
Everybody, John and Jerry, in terms of the. Forty eight, two eighty eight four, like the open space, the, the open development, right? And our requirement to. Make recognition to the town board and theirs to respond. I understand that there's no. Clock ticking, no time, you know, date certain by which we need to do it, but relatively speaking. How would we anchor it in the process? I mean, my gut would be that you'd. Do it at the point that you kind of can have a public hearing because at that point you, you've got. Data and information that everybody could be looking at.
Or at least enough information for us to feel comfortable to send a letter.
To, yeah, to at least sort of do that, but I'm just trying to think.
You couldn't have the public hearing until after.
No, but she's just saying how much information would we have? Isn't that what you're getting at?
How, how do we sort of measure when we have enough information? About the project that we could comfortably.
We'd have to feel comfortable because it's going to come from all seven of us.
You're the board of the town that is most responsible for ideas like this. All the issues would go into it, your usual subdivision questions. Is the road suitable? Is it suitable for the fire trucks? Are they taking care of the water? All of these subdivisions.
And we wouldn't go to a public hearing if we weren't satisfied.
I don't think you'd go to a public hearing until the.
Until after the town.
Town declares it's open development, right?
Well, typically they can't do an action unless there's a secret termination. I think you have to look into the secret regs because that's the coordinated review. It can't be uncoordinated. So. Typically, it's like going to getting a variance. If, if someone has to get a variance on a project, a lot of times either they're deferred to the Z B A, it's uncoordinated. Or you do a secret determination and, and send it off to the Z B A per se for a. For determination, this is another agency, inter-agency.
Z B A thing, it's, if you go into a subdivision application, the, the board finds your need of variance. They, they send it to the. Zoning board and the zoning board, you know, gives them the variance or not. Without the variance, nothing proceeds.
Right. But somehow we need some sort of secret paperwork in place with the seekers. Something has to happen with seeker.
Yeah, procedurally, in order for the subdivision to proceed, you need to get the.
Somebody has to create themselves lead agency.
Well, not only that, but you need to get. The town board to agree to the open development concept.
Before you have the public hearing.
Before you have the public hearing. Right. That's right. So. Right. So the question is, at this point, if you feel comfortable declaring your intent to act as lead agency. And then circulate that notice of intent to the other interested and involved agencies, which include. The town board. And that just puts them on notice that you are going to act as. Lead agency.
Unless, unless they decide to.
Unless they decide to, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to provide them with your recommendation on the two eighty A. So that I think that, what's that?
At that point.
At that point, right, right. All you're doing is you're establishing who would coordinate the environmental review.
At this point in time, correct, right. Everybody feel comfortable with us declaring ourselves lead agency?
Yes.
Bruce, Chris?
Yes.
You're going to declare, and just to be clarifying, just to, you're going to declare your intent to act as the.
To act, I'm sorry. Do we have to? Do we have to, to, to say what type this is or anything? Now just our intent to become.
It is a, I think you had indicated it was a type one action or an unlisted action.
Unlisted.
Unlisted actions.
It's type one, right? No. Type two, type two.
No, it's not a type two, but I think it's probably an unlisted action.
Yes.
Given that you don't have, just in, in a quick review of the environmental assessment form, you don't have significant adverse impacts.
Okay.
So, and given the scope and scale of the developments, I think you're comfortable with, even if, if it's an unlisted, unlisted action. Of taking that step of acting as lead, your notice of intent to act as the agency at this point. And that just starts the process. You're not making any decisions.
Right. It just is, we're just notifying people.
That's correct.
And agencies.
Yes.
Then I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. The other thing I was hoping to do is because winter is approaching. Sightwalk. Yes. And also with consultants to review our findings from our side, we could sort, we need to work that out with the wetland line, et cetera.
Yeah, Steve, are you still there?
I am here.
Yeah. Do you have somebody in your shop that, that can review wetland boundaries?
Yes.
Okay.
I also have to establish an escrow account.
Yeah.
So we can pay for everyone to look at the property. I can do that too.
Yeah, well, yeah, get in touch with, with Wendy and we'll coordinate that.
Yeah, how much time are you going to need to, to, to stake some things? Whenever you feel fit to be there, we'll have it staked. I'm looking for some boards suggestions. Probably next weekend. Is it weekends you want to visit or weekdays? How's it work?
Usually weekends.
Yeah, I mean, next weekend.
Yeah.
So Saturday, the twenty second?
A week from Saturday?
Yeah, what's the date?
Twenty second, I believe. And if someone is not there that day, we could meet up again. Jack just said he wouldn't be there. I'll be there. Another time saying, oh, if anybody can't make that date. We could meet if they want to. Okay, so I don't lose one of your members in the woods. As long as, as long as, all right, Steve, Steve, is that okay with you?
Saturday, the twenty second is fine, yes.
I'm good with that date, Bruce.
Um, I have a problem, but I can do it at another time.
Jack could do it then.
Yeah, I'm supposed to go to hospital twenty second.
Okay, so then I'm. That'd be fine. The twenty second, nine o'clock. Yes, very good. One thing for reference purposes, there is an existing house here, the cul-de-sac, but there is parking on the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
You have to, just to keep it simple. So that cul-de-sac is Green Tree Road. That's correct. Okay. And just for the, that's Somers address? Yes, okay. I was just thinking what we put in. Yorktown Heights. Did you hear that, Chris?
Yeah, or is that, is that Baldwin Place up there?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Any else we can answer tonight? Well, thank you very much for your time, everyone, and we look forward to meeting you at the site.
See you then.
Any other board member comments?
Oh, yes. I just want to give the board a heads up that the. Town board is scheduling a public hearing in November for. Two matters, zoning matters, which you will receive in short order. The first is. Allowing for pet care services in the commercial shopping center. That's a first that's a little suggestion. And then the second one is some revisions to the B H P, the Business Historic Preservation District. Which would restrict the use of drive-through restaurants and convenience retail. In the. No. So you'll, you'll be getting those and, and that would be a discussion item and recommendation to the town board at your next meeting.
We received the.
Yeah, we saw that, yeah.
We did, okay.
We did get that, yes.
Okay, excellent, good.
For the record, our next meeting is November ninth. Twenty twenty-two, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? See you on the week from Saturday.